Southampton Town Board on this ninth day of February 2023, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're seated, Sunday, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skivoni.
Present.
All right. It's always one. All right, so we have a.
But we settled.
Barely. I thought work sessions, we say here.
It's like ground.
Oh, that's new. I hadn't heard that.
Town board, town board meetings, we say present, but that's, it's not confirmed. That's what, that's what I do. You don't have to do it like that. All right, so first item is reviewing the draft agenda for the February 14th, Valentine's Day, I believe, meeting. So that's how we're gonna get to celebrate Valentine's Day.
You don't want to spend Valentine's Day.
One o'clock here. So yeah, it's gonna be one o'clock, uh, February 14th.
A minute.
Here at, uh, Town Hall. And we will have seven public hearings, it looks like. So we have, the first one is related to, uh, acquisition of development rights at Two Bluff Lane. That's the, that's the John Steinbeck home in Sag Harbor. Now, we did say we would try to get the access plan out there. So have, we put it on the website?
Yep.
We put it on the website.
And we do, it was all put together. I think it was released, Janice, we did some kind of media advisory or?
Yes.
No, no, we did a press release.
We did a press release.
Not an immediate advisor.
It's on the website and it's, yeah, it went to the CACs and Civic.
Yeah, no, and I, I had at least one reporter call me about it, so, um, I think it's out there.
Passed it a story.
It is out there.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm pretty happy with how personally, how it turned out in terms of balancing all the needs, right, with public access as well as the sensitivity of the parcel historically, as well as the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, appreciate working with all of you guys and Councilman Skivoni in particular, but also with the Sag Harbor Partnership and Susan Mead and Council and everybody who worked so hard, Brett from, um,
Mitchner Center.
Mitchner Center, so, um, you know.
And the neighbors.
So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to close this hearing and act on it. Do we have a resolution of the package yet?
Yes.
We do.
Yes, yep.
All right, so we would be able to then act that afternoon. All right, so the second public hearing is amending, uh, we still have TO, but I guess that's Town Ordinance. Local law to amend TO 312, well, parking prohibited designation location, portion of County Road 80. It's in Hampton Bay. So this is that National Grid issue that we sort of left open where they have the manhole covers. And Rick, you were working on this, right?
Yeah, we were asking for the opinion of the county on the increasing the parking, but honestly, I've been there several times. I was actually there when National Grid was working on, uh, the manholes. It's, uh, it's gonna have to go as we proposed it. We're gonna have to do the no parking there.
It actually increases the sight line coming off of Old Riverhead Road. I was, I walked around there.
So you think there might be some benefit in that part there?
Looking on the bright side.
There is a lot of traffic comes out of there in the morning.
It's a cut through for ways to bring people out to Montauk Highway. So that part of it was great, you know, 20 to 30 feet, which is the additional parking spaces. But three National Grid trucks pulled up there, parked between the manhole covers and the fog line, which is pretty, you know, pretty nice area and, uh, it maybe was four trucks, all 190 feet. So we're gonna have to go with it. I think the neighbors understand at this point.
Yeah. Well, it's the businesses, right?
As a matter of fact, the one gentleman who spoke said thank you to everybody for, uh, for listening and understanding.
Yeah, I wish we could create some more parking on the south side of the road somewhere, but I thought there might have been one opportunity there, one little triangular piece that maybe we could get some parking spaces in. I guess for another day. All right, uh, so that's the second public hearing. The third public hearing considers amending 178. The Ease Quag Public Drinking Water Infrastructure Improvement Plan to sunset that, that CPF program where we're connecting people in that area free of charge. Number four is a public hearing considering amending Town Code Chapter 298 taxation to amend Article 13, exemption for first time home buyers to continue the exemptions for newly constructed homes. I think Councilman Skivoni, you've been working on that, right? Is that, that's related to CPF program or is that related to, uh, something else?
Uh, the CPF program.
It is CPF. Um, number five is public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 298, Article 5 exemption for senior citizens to increase income eligibility for property tax relief.
Yeah, these three are all related. This is, we do a standard.
We're just, we're increasing the income limits, right? Number six is, uh, related to exemptions for disabled persons in terms of eligibility for property tax relief. So we're increasing the income there too. And number seven is considering amending Town Code to include special exemption standards for living quarters for golf course employees. We've been hearing from some of the golf courses, uh, quite favorably in terms of this. All right, um, so then we get to resolutions and, uh, let's try to get through this as quick as possible. Tommy, John?
Town Board Resolution 141 of 2023, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara. This is a resolution of adopting local law to amend, uh, TO 312 parking prohibited in designated locations on a, on a portion of County Road 80, East Montauk Highway, Hampton Bay, as in order to provide National Grid unencumbered access to manhole covers in order to maintain and operate the gas main pressure regulator system. We were just discussing this.
The only thing is, uh, in the notice of adoption, that's at the bottom, we need to update the date of the meeting to, uh, February 14th.
We had two meetings, right? Do we have the, what's the date of the hearing?
We did originally, here, this on the 24th.
The 24th is when you're actually going to be adopting.
The 14th.
The 14th, yes, 14th, I'm sorry.
But shouldn't we say?
But we did hold a meeting on the 24th.
You did hold a meeting on the 24th, but you're adopting it on the 14th, not the 24th. You didn't adopt it.
Okay.
But it says after a public hearing was held by the Town Board, both in person on January 24th and?
No, but it says it was adopted at their meeting on January 24th and we're adopting it on the 14th.
It says you had a public hearing that was held on January 24th and then at the meet, at the meeting of February 14th, you adopted local law, which will be numbered later.
Right.
So the second, January 24th should be 14th, February 14th.
Assuming it passes.
Because you didn't take an action at the last meeting. You're taking the action at the upcoming.
But it should state the dates that the hearings were held.
It is.
It does.
The first date is the hearing date and the second date is the adoption date.
We only have one public hearing, supervisor.
But we're having another one on 14th. But I mean, it's just, it's just a carryover.
Dejourn to the 14th hearing.
All right, so.
This happens frequently when you.
I just think it should say where we held the hearing on January 24th and February 14th and then
That's correct.
and then at the meeting of February 14th.
That's correct. That's what Clark is saying.
Okay, all right, I just, I wasn't sure you guys were saying that we should, I think we need to list both hearing dates and stuff.
We do, yes.
Okay. So you can take care of that?
Thank you.
Yeah, so we won't have to amend it.
You don't need.
Yes, I will.
We'll.
This is the draft review, so I'm just alerting you that we need to make this change and if you're agreeable to that, we'll, we'll do so.
Okay, Town Board Resolution ID 42396, authorize supervisor renewal license agreement with T. De Green Food Service Incorporated for the operation of the food and beverage service at the Boxer Bug Golf Center and authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents pertaining to its license agreement.
Like the stalled egg.
So that is a renewal.
Yes.
That's, that Randy and his, same guy?
Yes.
42294, authorize office supply purchases from Staples using Sourcewell contract. The next one, 42271, authorized purchase and installation fencing from Suffolk County contract with residential fences.
423, 42375, authorize a purchase of managed print service. Did I move?
Yeah.
42400, authorize purchase of groundskeeping repair parts, service and accessories from Suffolk County contract with All Island Equipment Corp.
And now 42375, authorize a purchase of managed print services from Omnia Partners contract with Toshiba Business Solutions.
All right. 42330, authorize purchase of safety shoes from Suffolk County contract with Safeguard. Safety, did you find that?
Just, I don't remember.
I didn't know we bought safety shoes.
Safety shoes from, from Safeguard Safety Shoe Company.
Town Board Resolution ID 42401, authorize purchase of snowplow and spreader parts from Suffolk County contract with Tretus Incorporated. 42456, authorize the purchase of trailer from United AG and Turf NE LLC using Sourcewell contract. Authorized purchase, uh, sorry, Town Board Resolution 42460, authorize purchase of two Henderson six wheel dump trucks with plows from Henderson Products Incorporated using the Sourcewell contract.
42325, authorize purchases of automotive Ford vehicle parts and service from Suffolk County contract with Newans Bay Shore Ford. Newans, I guess Bay Shore, is that two words, Bay Shore? Bay Shore Ford. I thought Bay Shore was one word. I guess so. Maybe somebody could check that.
It's two words.
Two words. It is, all right. 42389, authorize roof replacement at 240 West Montauk Highway for roof services of New York. A Tecta American company using NCPA contract. And I believe that, that is the, the building that's slated for trustees as well as, uh, Office of Housing, Community Development.
Okay, Town Board Resolution ID 42441, authorize supervisor to execute the 2023 Inspirational Triathlon Racing Incorporated DVA I Tri contract. We do have an amendment to that in the final resolve and also in the financial impact where it says 3015. It should actually be 6119.
3015 becomes 6119?
Yes.
Sunday, you get that?
No, I did not.
So we, it's not really an amendment, just a correction? So now is that in the case two? In the GL, because it's twice, the GL code appears twice.
Yes, it's in the final resolve and also in the financial impact.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's, that's good to hear. I tried, I've been working with them for a long time, so I'm really glad to see this game of out. Good.
Yeah, it's good group.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, 42290, authorize supervisor to execute a 2023 contract with Risk Strategies Company, Inc. to provide actuarial services to the town.
Town Board Resolution 42439, authorize supervisor to execute the 2023 Human Understanding and Growth Services HUGS contract. There's also a correction in that one also. Again, in the final resolve and the financial impact, it should be 6119.
Instead of 3015?
Correct.
Got it.
Town Board Resolution ID 42399, co-sponsored with Councilman Martel, is to authorize supervisor to sign contract extensions or extensions with Vio. I'm having trouble reading this. Vio Low Industries Green A Petroleum, I think that's what it's saying, and Vio's Petroleum Company Incorporated for Oil Solutions and Grease.
Town Board Resolution ID 42297, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extension for maintenance, installation, repair of water mains with Roadwork Construction Corporation. Town Board Resolution 42308, authorize supervisor to sign contract extension for furnished and installed micro-surfacing and/or crack sealing with Thomas H. Gannon and Sons Incorporated. Town Board Resolution ID 42307, authorize supervisor to sign contract extensions with South Fork Asphalt and Rosemar Contracting Corp. for drainage construction east and west of the canal.
42413, authorize supervisor to sign contract with TK Elevator Corporation for preventative maintenance of elevators located at Hampton Bay's Community Center Flanders, New York and Hampton Bay's Community Center, uh, in Hampton Beach, New York.
Town Board Resolution ID 42440, authorize supervisor to sign family service lead grant agreement and accept funds from Youth Bureau to provide mental health outreach and counseling to youth and families. Town Board Resolution ID 42388, authorize the purchase of a 2024 Kenworth T4 ADV dump truck from Gabrielli Truck Sales Limited using the Sourcewell contract.
42274, authorize the purchase of auto parts and accessories from Omnia Partners contract with Advanced Auto Parts.
Town Board Resolution 42431, authorize the purchase of food products and related supplies from Omnia Partners with Premier Inc. and with distribution through U.S. Foods.
42267, authorize the purchase of gasoline from the New York State OGS contract with Sprague Operating Resources LLC.
Town Board Resolution ID 424500, 42405, authorize the purchase of heavy duty brake and truck parts from AA Systems Truck and Bus under the Town of Huntington contract number TOH 21-01-002. Town Board Resolution ID 42371, authorize the purchase of Hitachi six wheel loader from All Island Equipment Corp. using the Town of Islip contract.
42369, authorize the purchase of law enforcement safety equipment and supplies from the Albany County with Galls LLC.
Town Board Resolution 42432, authorize the purchase of milk and dairy products from the NYS OGS with Primaland Dairy LLC.
42320, authorize the purchase of power plant desktop system from Paseo Technologies to assist in the scheduling of bus services provided by Senior Services.
Resolution 42433, authorize the purchase of road salt from the New York State OGS contract with Atlantic Salt Incorporated. Town Board Resolution ID 42402, authorize the purchase of tires from the Suffolk County contract with Barnwell House of Tires.
John, read for me a bit, sorry.
I'd like to come next anyway, right?
Yep, yep.
Uh, Town Board Resolution ID 42442, uh, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, is authorize the sale of the community benefit unit located at 93 Slaton Circle, West Hampton. Town Board Resolution ID 42407, uh, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, is authorize the supervisor sign, to sign an extended agreement with L.K. McLean Associates, the PC for professional services associated with the Greens Bay Nature Trail.
Town Board Resolution ID 42416, authorize supervisor to execute a 2023 Youth Bureau agreements with Youth Bureau Programming Consultants.
Town Board Resolution ID 42395, is to authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Contemporary Computer Services Incorporated for network installation for 240 West Montauk Highway.
Town Board Resolution ID 42309, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extension for vituminous concrete and vituminous materials with East Island Asphalt Corp. Town Board ID 42265, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract extension for printing and mailing of the Hampton Bay's Water District Bills with Questmark Information Management Incorporated.
Town Board Resolution ID 42479, authorize the supervisor to sign an ex, a, it should, I think, be an extended contract with Nessiano Consulting Incorporated for grant writing assistance, page 40.
Town Board Resolution 42393, authorize the supervisor to sign agreements for senior service programs.
Town Board Resolution ID 42445, authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Brisco Protective LLC for 1370 meters path, Southampton, New York. 42449, authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Brisco Protective LLC for 20 Jackson Avenue, Hampton Bay's, New York.
H44, Jen.
So what, is that what the 42329, authorize the supervisor to sign an amendment to the lease agreement for 38 Little Plays Road Parking Lot and Garage Base.
Town Board Resolution 42472, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract extension for furnish and deliver meter pits and ancillary equipment with Ferguson Waterworks.
So just going back and reading the, so the parking lot, the rent is going up by 10%.
It's the same rent.
From 800 per month to 900 a month. Starting end of last year. Plus an additional $50,000 a month per electricity. So it's really 150. Okay. All right, so now we're at, um.
Town Board Resolution ID 42295, uh, authorize the supervisor to sign contract with York Labs for the Hampton Bay's Water District.
Town Board Resolution 42417, authorize supervisor to sign the 2023 SEPA Muhair Incorporated Human Services Grant.
Town Board Resolution ID 42409, authorize the supply and delivery of auto parts, parts from Grade A Petroleum Corp. under Town of East Hampton contract number EH 21-027.
Should I remove one of those parts?
Yeah, we think we can take one of those out.
Okay.
What did you take out?
Second part, parts twice.
Auto parts, parts? 42317, authorize the town to participate in the Environmental Facilities Corporation's Clean Vessel System Program operation and maintenance project to support the Constab, Bay Constables Pump Out Boat Program for 2023. We haven't officially changed it from Bay Constables to Harbor Masters, right? That's occurring?
That's in this, I think that's in this. It's in this packet that we're doing that.
I guess it won't matter.
I don't think it don't matter for that.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Rick.
Town Board ID 42473, award and authorize supervisor to sign contract for track loader, accessories and trailer with All Island Equipment Incorporated.
42394, award and authorize supervisor to sign a contract with Paul Singer Design for educational signage for the Conic Estuary Committee. All right, 42322, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with H2M Architects and Engineering for architectural and engineering services for the Southampton Police Headquarters Expansion.
Sunday, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Town Board Resolution 42467, declare item surplus and authorize disposal of Cisco access points.
42280, declare item surplus and authorize disposal of vehicles. Looks like there's three of them there.
1971.
Got a crown, Vic.
Good, 1971 GMC. Line up, they'll be lining up for that one.
Vehicle number 24.
All right, um, 42376, designate professional surveying firms for the town of Southampton.
Sunday, I'd like to be added to that, please.
42376.
Correct, thank you.
There's a whole bunch of.
This, as you know, is, is part of getting prepped for our fifth project, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot, a lot of different surveys.
Yeah, well, it's a big project. We have over 100 surveys to do, so if you want to.
Yeah.
Vivid up.
Yeah.
Kelly's been working very closely with Tom and Nick.
That'll speed it up by the war.
And some of this goes through, I mean, this is what works. Oh, yeah, Tom and Nick have been very involved in it and Kelly and. Yeah, I mean, staff wise. Gil Anderson, yeah, yeah.
So I'm up to 42373, recall and amend, authorize supervisor to sign an agreement with Southampton Hospital for production assistance with the show Your Health Matters to be broadcast on Sun 20 TV.
Sunday, I'd like to be added.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the town compensates us for that. Uh, I'm sorry, this hospital compensates? Hospital compensates the town for that. Uh, 42437, recall and amend Town Board Resolution Number 1103 of 2022 as it relates to First Coastal Corporation. Right, I had raised the issue of whether they needed a waiver and I think this is the waiver. Right, Jim?
I'm sorry.
On, uh, First Coastal, because they do work for private.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
From the ethics code.
Absolutely.
But there's sort of a there's really, real source, yeah.
Right, it really is, yeah.
There's really nobody else that's doing what they're doing.
Yeah, and we appreciate his, uh, his expertise in this field, for sure. He's been very helpful.
42438, recall and amend 2022-1110, authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Brisco Protective LLC for 1976 North Sea Road, Townes Point Marina.
With alarm system.
With alarm system, yeah. 42390, recall and amend Resolution 2022-1152, authorize supervisor to sign extended contracts with Southampton Volunteer Ambulance Facility with Commander Electric for the electrical portion, intricate tech solutions LTD for the mechanical portion, Hirschen Company for the plumbing portion, and Stalkall General Contractors for the general construction portion. And I, I don't, I, I mean, I heard that the, a lot of the material was about to arrive for that ambulance barn. Has anybody seen?
Drove past there this morning. They were not on site.
No, okay. Any day now, you're gonna start seeing some.
Looks like they're ready to go, yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to be added to that. Thank you.
All right, 42366, recall and amend 2023-104, authorize supervisor to sign contract extension with GNM, GNM Dege Inc. for vehicle fuel management system maintenance installation.
Town Board Resolution ID 42443, is 2023 notice to bidders for 2022 Ford F-600 Dump Truck. For Minus Works. Town Board Resolution ID 42478, 2023 notice to bidders for F-250 Super Duty with plow.
Co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara.
Town Board Resolution ID 42360, the 2023 notice to bidders for 2020 Eager Beaver 55 GSL-3 Trailer. Town Board Resolution ID 42, 42300, reject bids and second notice to bidders for portable toilet rentals.
I guess the first one's worth marking out.
Was it waste?
A waste. I had another word in mind.
Town Board Resolution ID 42283, is a 2023 notice to bidders for irrigation maintenance and repair.
Right, 42372, 2023 request for qualifications for professional appraisal services.
It's also, yeah, also, yeah.
42268, accepts grant from FM Global for the Fire Prevention Department and amends the 2023 adopted budget. 42298, amends 2022 adopted budget for Land Management Division.
I'd like to be added to that, Sunday, please.
Got it. Land Management is a department. Should it say Land Management Department in the title?
It's, well, long range planning departments, land management, I don't know, that's.
Yeah, it's town, it's actually Town Planning and Development is Janice's title administrator, but still Land Management Department.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So yeah, just, just fix it in the title, Sunday.
Need to check the division in the title. It says it actually in the body of it, yeah.
Just say Land Management Department rather than Division. 42446, amend the 2022 budget for various departments. Four two four four six amend the twenty twenty two budget for various departments. Four two four one five amend twenty three to twenty seven capital budget for Water District Sub Aquius Crossing, we talked about that earlier.
Town Board Resolution ID four two four two eight authorize dispersment of landmarks maintenance award for window replacement and maintenance of the town landmark Topping Reener House located at one twenty one South Road, West Hampton. Town Board Resolution ID two four two four 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 is authorize funding to furnish and install fencing at the old Southampton burial ground, burying ground or burial ground with residential fences corp.
Cindy, is it burying ground?
Yes, it is.
Burying, right.
Historically accurate to say burying ground.
I had the, I had a feeling, and I knew you would know.
Yeah, that's part of my department.
That's her thing.
I know that. You were dying to add that again.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, John.
I just got to shake the pun, next pun out of my head. Town Board Resolution ID four two two five seven is to appoint affirmative action task force for twenty twenty three. Town Board Resolution ID four two three seven zero appoint anti-bias task force committee for twenty twenty three.
Four two four two two reappoint individuals to the architectural review board.
Would I like to be added to that, Cindy?
You want to be on the architectural review board?
Well, I'm the liaison architect.
I thought you wanted to be on it.
No, conservation board was enough.
I'm just gonna attach the.
All right, four two four two three appoint Michael Cherry, Chair of the ARB.
Same, please.
And we'll put John as a co-sponsor.
Certainly.
Four two four two six reappoint individuals to the conservation board, John, you want to be a.
Yeah, I'm the liaison conservation as well, appreciate that, thank you.
All right, you got that, Cindy?
Got it.
Four two four two seven appoint Harry Ludlow Chair of the Conservation Board for twenty twenty three, John, you want to co-sponsor that?
Yes, please.
All right, Cindy?
Four two three four six appoint Dark Skies Advisory Committee for twenty twenty three.
Four two four two four appoint licensing review board members for twenty twenty three. Four two four two five appoint Anthony Italia Chair of the Licensing Review Board for twenty twenty three.
Four two three one eight appoint Trails Advisory Board for twenty twenty three.
Four two four two zero reappoint individuals to the Public Safety Commission. Four two four two one appoint Robert I. Ross Chair of the Public Safety Commission for twenty twenty three. Four two three one five authorize additional funds for payment of outstanding legal services by Vincent Tumi Esquire for twenty twenty two. Four two three eight six continuation of legal services by Vincent Tumi for twenty twenty three. Four two three nine two authorize the town to reimburse Neymer the deductible property damage claims. Four two four three six authorize town attorney to sign a stipulation of settlement agreement. Four two three eight one continuation of legal services by Campola Middleton and McCormick as it relates to litigation filed against the town involving River Rock Structure Capital Four two three eight three continuation of legal services by Serlin Ballin Adler and Heyman as it relates to Rose Hill Road Water Mill. Four two three eight four continuation of legal services by David Spellman and Barrett. Four two three A five continuation of legal services by Stephen Leventhal for ethics matters in twenty three. Four two two six two recall and amend Resolution twenty twenty two dash eleven thirty as it, as to the authorization of additional funds for Sotman, Ballin, Adler and Heyman LLP. Four two two seven three recall and amend Resolution twenty twenty two dash eleven thirty one as to the authorization of additional funds for David Arnstein Esquire for the law offices of Vols and Bigliata P LLC for twenty two. Four two three eight seven retains David Arston Esquire of the law offices of Thomas and Vols P LLC for all matters involving sand mines in the town of Southampton for twenty twenty three. Four two four oh four retains Davis Callman Barrett LLP as it relates to the matter of Richard Ampher at Al versus Town of Southampton Planning Board at Al and the Lewis Road PRD Project. Four one nine oh nine resolution of adoption and ending Town Code Chapter one seventy eight East Quag Public Making Water Infrastructure Improvement Program to add a sunset provision. Subjected to that hearing, Tommy Johnson.
ID number four one two eight nine resolution of adopting amending Town Code Chapter two ninety eight to amend Article thirteen exemption for first-time homebuyers to continue the exemption for newly constructed homes.
Cindy, could I be added to that? Actually, the next three.
Yeah, I think the whole board wants to.
I'd, I'd, I'd sign that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Did everybody want?
The whole board wants to be on.
Probably all co-sponsors.
I'm the one that Cindy just asked for.
Yeah.
And the next two.
And the next two. Gotcha.
Town Board Resolution four one two nine zero resolution of adoption amending Town Code Chapter two ninety eight taxation to amend Article five exemption of, for senior citizens to increase the income eligibility for property tax relief, co-sponsored by the entire board. ID number four one two nine two resolution of adoption amending Town Code Chapter two ninety eight taxation to amend Article eleven partial exemption for disabled persons with limited incomes to increase the income eligibility for property tax relief, again, co-sponsored by the entire board.
Four two four oh six amends twenty twenty three Department of Land Management Environment Division Fee Schedule.
I'd like to be added to that, please.
Four two four five A authorize supervisor and deputy supervisor to sign documents electronically.
Four two four one twelve authorize the supervisor to execute any and all documents to participate in the Long Island Greenway Phase Two application to the United States Department of Transportation Regional Project Assistance Program known as the Rebuilding American Infrastructure and Sustainability with Equity Raise Grant Program.
I'd like to co-sponsor that as well.
Me as well, Cindy.
Yeah.
Entire board?
Sure.
And this is, we had a presentation on this, work session last week.
Good work, Tommy Johnson. We're gonna go far with that. Town Board Resolution ID four two four one one is authorize supervisor to submit, submit to the Clean Energy Communities Grant Application fifteen thousand EV Community Campaign for the purchase of an electric vehicle. Town Board Resolution ID four two three nine seven co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni is the authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bay's Hibernians Annual Saint Patrick's Day Parade on March eighteenth, twenty twenty three from eleven AM to two thirty PM. Town Board Resolution ID four two three nine eight co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni is the authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the East Quag Elementary School, Robert J. Long, five K Ron Wark on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty three from seven AM to one PM.
Could I be added to that, please?
Yeah, Cindy, me, please.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry.
Wait, the four two three nine eight.
I'm sorry, Jay, did you also?
Yeah, well, I wanted to get on to four two three nine seven, the Hampton Bay's Parade one, and then I would also be, like to be added on four two three nine eight, so.
Okay.
So I think that's.
And I probably want to be on the next one.
That's the whole board.
Okay, so, so right now I'm on the Hampton Bay's Saint Patrick's Day Parade.
I'll go on that.
Yeah, four two four six five.
Well, four two three nine seven, might as well put everybody on that one.
I don't want to be on that one.
Oh, yeah, except for Rick.
I know. Okay, on four two three nine seven, please raise your hand if you want to be on this.
Everybody but Rick is on it.
How about the sponsor?
Okay, so, is that everyone then? Okay.
Can I be on? Sure.
Yes, Charles, you may, entire board.
And then four two three nine eight, I think everybody's on.
Everybody's on.
Are we everybody, everyone now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we're probably.
And I'll probably be the next one, I imagine, except for Rick, on the next one, which I don't think I've read. Town Board Resolution ID four two four six five wave of snow, I always do that, show mobile fees for the Hampton Bay's Hibernians Annual Saint Patrick's Day Parade.
Yes, please.
And that's co-sponsored with everyone, except Councilman Marton.
For some unknown reason. Which is the.
He's accusing himself.
I don't know if he has to accuse himself, but.
Be the only opportunity ever to see me in a top hat.
Yeah, we're gonna make good money.
All right, four two four three five appoint Kristen Doherty to confidential secretary position at Land Management Planning Division. Four two two seven eight appoint Tara Cody to database manager, information technology. Four two three two six appoint Cindy Hatchess.
Candy.
I'm sorry, is that your candy?
Candy.
Candy Hatchess to senior office assistant position in human resources.
Cindy, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Four two three nine one promotes police officer Richard Garofola to rank of sergeant in Southampton Town Police Department. Tommy John, do you want to go on that one?
Yes, please.
You got this.
And the next one.
And then four two three two one creates fire marshal one position in community preservation and reassigned Brian Williams. Four two two four two approve accessibility carryover from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three for CSEA members. Four two two, four two two four three approve occasion carryover twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three for CSEA members, didn't I just say that? One is excess and this, the other is regular, is that what I'm looking at?
Yes.
So, yeah, so, five of whom have excess and the rest are standard, carryover, all right, and then four two four oh three attendance at NYTOA conference.
Four two, ID number four two four three zero authorize the Town Code Compliance and Emergency Management Administrator to attend the twenty twenty three New York State Association of Town Conference, we're gonna have a good showing there. ID number four two two eight eight authorize the Fire Marshal, it's Courtney, Courtney, I'm sorry.
I didn't.
Yeah, there you go. I even practiced it with her, and I am truly sorry, Courtney. And Shane Sharkey to attend the New York State Fire Academy Electrical Fire Investigation Course March twenty second and March twenty fourth, twenty twenty three in Montor Falls, New York. ID number four two two eight nine authorize the town investigator Ricardo Larios and code enforcement officer Brian Rondi to attend the New York State Fire Academy Hazmat Tech Module one, two, and three course February twentieth, February twenty fourth in Montor Falls, New York, sounds like a good one.
Four two three one six authorize personnel from Human Resources Office to attend the Association of Towns Annual Conference. Four two four two nine modifications to CSEA schedule. Four two two nine two update Town Workplace Violence Prevention Program.
Town Board Resolution four two two four zero notice of public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter two sixty two entitled registration of foreclosure properties in order to comply with recently amended state law S three nine three three.
You kidding me, you know about that?
I'm not sure what the change is necessarily.
They've taken away our ability to charge a premium.
Oh, really?
So now they have set the fee much lower than we had it, so.
All right, this is for the registry for foreclosed properties?
Yeah, Ryan Murphy felt it was still really important to keep the data, so to continue the program.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, well, what are we allowed to charge?
Seventy, seventy-five, maybe?
Hundred and fifty, I thought I said.
Instead of five hundred?
It's like it's.
Hundred and fifty, right?
Yeah, from five hundred, well, proposed language is as established by annual fee schedule.
He's presenting this at public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Right. I believe it's like seventy-five for the company, seventy-five to us.
So it's at a hundred and fifty, no, rather than five hundred?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, four two four seven seven, this needs an amendment, so, I have the amendment.
No, let's read it first.
So this is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of development rights at seven, nine, eleven, twelve, and fifteen, Marston Streets, at Harbor, and to amend the community preservation project plan to include fifteen, Marston Street, and amend CPF management and stewardship plan to include properties. So this is that partnership with the Sag Harbor School, and apparently we were emailed everything that we had been asking for yesterday, I came in after, after six PM, so I haven't actually seen it yet, but they had at least verbally told me that they were meeting all, I think we had eleven conditions for public hearing, so this would set that public hearing, so that gives us time to look at it before Tuesday, and if everybody's okay on Tuesday, then we could pass this, but there's some changes to the resolution, so.
So, just to back up, did they send documents, or have we seen an acceptance in writing from them, from the Sag Harbor School Board?
I have to look at it.
Okay.
But I was told that that, yes, that was part of what we received.
Okay, okay, good.
That, that they would meet our conditions.
So if it does, then we have to table it.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, so, but the resolution, we have several things being added, so, I have this, Cindy, over here, I could just.
I do, too.
So there's a whereas, it says whereas Marston Street Properties LLC has expressed an interest in selling the fee title in the amount of eight point five million, whereas the Town of Southampton expressed interest in purchasing development rights on all five properties for a shared portion of the fee title in the amount of six million dollars, and in addition to the Sag Harbor Union Free School District purchasing a shared portion of the fee title or underlying residual fee in the amount of two point five million, and then another whereas, whereas it is contemplated that the Sag Harbor Union Free School District intends to utilize the subject properties as a recreational area in the form of an athletic field, I, shouldn't that say, Jim, not just them, they're, I mean, they're going to be building and operating, maintaining the community park, but it's a community, it's not just a school facility, it's a, this makes it sound like it's ju, might be their intention to use it portion of the time, but that's also subject to the access plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just think we need some clarification.
Yeah, I don't have the language in front of me, but the main, the main, yeah, the main idea was to give notice that the, that if the town's either buying the Bell Mary Ten Dollar Shared Fee, that the ultimate use of the property was not for preservation, but it was for active recreation.
Right, okay, but I just, I, I don't want to negotiate on the fly, and, you know, we haven't seen this other stuff, we have the right to withdraw it before, but, you know, that's gonna, so that we're all up to speed on this, and we're all working to the same document, I think it's really critical.
Yeah, I haven't seen the document yet.
It's those little things.
Jackie did schedule this for further discussion in exec session today.
I wouldn't like it to have one line, though, that about it.
It's on exec session.
Being a community.
Right, right, we can expand.
What's the end of and, the end of that sentence ends with and, should it say and public park, or what are?
No, that's like and whereas, it's referring, they all have that, you always have the semicolon in the.
Right, but I don't see public access there, so.
That would be where we would insert it.
Yeah, so, we, we need to, we're missing a, we're missing another whereas clause, there's some language in that whereas clause, Jim.
Yeah, I could say, I'm, yeah.
Can.
I can provide something to, it's.
If you could get something to Cindy before she publishes it, it would be good.
I'd say, number one, I would change the word utilized to develop the subject properties in the form of, and to be used also for the, for the publics and like that.
Right.
If you could just put that in writing to, to me, that'd be great.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, what's your timeframe?
What's my timeframe?
Yes, as soon as possible.
Because you can't publish it till you have that, so. Because you can't publish it till you have that, so.
So what's our timeframe? I don't understand the urgency of doing this.
Well, there is a certain timeframe with the seller, but, you know, but the hope is that we'll be able to notice the public hearing for, what is the date?
Twenty eighth.
And I believe the intention, the intention of the school is to have this on for a bond in May, so they have to do those processes, so that the quicker, I believe, we can do this, they can do that, and the whole thing will go, but we have to have that language clarified today.
Right, right. Also, 42319 is a notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of 127 and 137 Mary's Lane North Sea and amend the community preservation project plan to include 137 Mary's Lane and amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include those properties. Public hearing would be February 28th. 42461 is again a notice of public hearing to consider the grant of a conservation easement in connection with the subdivision of JSC Resources, Inc. in West Hampton. This one would be on March 14th, 2023 at 1:00 PM. 42463, it's a notice of public hearing to consider amending various sections of the town code in connection with retail cannabis dispensaries within the Town of Southampton, and I think that's also March, let me see. It's a long one, March 14th at 23:00, 1:00 PM, so that's the zoning for cannabis dispensers. And then 42468, authorize acquisition of development rights restricted use easement and historic preservation easement at Two Buck Point Lane, that's John Steinbeck home, obviously subject to the closing of the public hearing.
And the police guidelines.
And the what?
Access agreement.
Yeah, the access agreement.
I'd like to be added to that, Sunday.
Okay, is that it? So this, Sunday just needs the language from Jim, right? Other than that, we're good? Okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, Sunday, we get to publish. Where do you have that?
Still takes the time to add all the sponsors now.
Yeah, lots of cosponsors.
In a few minutes.
All right. All right, so on the, back to the agenda, I think we're up to updates, right? Yeah, okay, so I guess I'll start, well, last, last night was the police awards, and I thought I brought my schedule from last night, maybe I didn't. Yeah, here it is. So I, I, Councilwoman McNamara was there, and Councilman Skivoni was also there last night, correct? And, let's see, Officer of the Year was Police Officer Ralph Pepe, and then, I'm not gonna read all the award recipients, I can pass this around. The Public Safety Dispatcher of the Year was PSD Taylor Kern, and it was, you know, it was a really nice ceremony, lots, I think Detective Metcalf was there like a lot of the time, right? There's quite a number of things that Detective Metcalf was recognized for, other people also were brought up a number of times. I thought Chief Kieran did a good job as the host or emcee, and Lieutenant Ralph, I think, did a lot of work putting the event together, was over at the college, Southampton College in, at Chancellor's Hall in the Duke Auditorium there. Let me see, what else? Earlier that day, I had recorded with Chief Kieran in a Talk of the Town Show for, I guess, Sun TV or CTV, wherever that will go, that went well, too, was my first time really sitting down and interviewing the new police chief like that for the community. There's a wall raising ceremony in partnership with Habitat for Humanity and the Town Housing Authority, Southampton Town Housing Authority, Island Outreach Foundation. This will be.
February.
Yeah, February 14th at 9:00 AM, so Valentine's Day morning, at 116 Dale Avenue Riverside. This will be the fourth home constructed in the Riverside community by Habitat for Humanity. If you haven't had an opportunity to be at one of these wall raisings, they're, they're really, you know, it's a real, it's a real community thing, it feels really good to help put together a house that will be attainable, affordable to a community member, so I encourage you all to go, I know we have to be back here that day for things, but hopefully you can fit it into your schedule. What else should I update you? I know the county, there's a law that's being proposed, I'm gonna have to ask Kathleen to do some analysis of it, they're trying to create a countywide sewer district, and I believe there's some legislation pending at the county level that would charge all of our residents in assessment as well as possibly a property tax for the, you know, the whole county, which will help fund these IA systems, but also will help fund the sewer plants in Western Suffolk, primarily that's where the sewer plants are, like Bergen Point, and sort of spreads out the cost of operating those plants. It's something we're gonna have to look at carefully, whether this is something that, whether we want to take a position on it, we have our own water quality funds, we're already sort of taxing ourselves to do the IA systems and build sewage treatment facilities, so.
We discussed this also in the context of Riverside Sewer District.
Yeah, so I'm not saying right now whether I think it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think we need to do some analysis on this issue, and then decide whether, you know, what position we as a township should take on it. So I think that's all I want to bring up for updates, let me start with Councilwoman McNamara to my left.
Okay.
You're good? All right.
So last night I did miss police awards, I had to go to the Flanders Riverside North Hampton Advisory Meeting, it's the first one they've had in three months, they're doing a little bit of restructuring, they're getting a new board in place. The two speakers last night, one was Curtis Highsmith from the Housing Authority, he did speak about the wall raising and also the lottery system, and he's still, they're still taking applications for the next four affordable homes, we have all that information on the website. The second speaker was Joyce Novak from Pecan Gestuary, she was explaining their contributions to the Riverside Park and the shoreline preservation that there, they gave us a grant for $100,000 for. So it was a nice meeting, it was well received, you know, they had a good night there. Youth Advisory, Youth Bureau also has the open mic, as I said before, tomorrow night, 5 to 8 at the Hampton Coffee in Southampton, grades 5 through 12, and.
Not in Watermill?
In Southampton.
The one on County Route 39A?
Yeah, and also they're doing a pancake breakfast on March 4th at the Hampton Bay Senior Center, it's $10, they raise money for some of their community service projects, so it's a good one to go to.
What time is that, open mic there? That's tomorrow, is it?
Yeah, 6 to 8 tomorrow. Friday night.
And the pancake breakfast at the Riverhead Senior Center?
Uh, no, the Hampton Bay's Community Center. Yeah, it's poetry, you know, instrumental, saying it's whatever you want.
I have a conflict, but I'm, my other thing ends early, I'll try and swing by. All right, anything else?
That's it.
John?
Well, you touched on a couple of things already, we did, we had a good meeting the other day here in the Town Board Room about electrification and some of the laws that are coming out of the state that I think we should support as a municipality, I think most municipalities support that, and I'll get that, that data to you guys in a formal format. On a fun side, I'm going to be with my, my sort of alma mater, West Hampton Beach High School Robotics Team, the First Robotics Team, they're actually gonna do a demonstration next week, and, you know, Optimum supports them with a lot of, a lot of money for doing that, and I was a mentor for many years before I came into office with, with that group, so it's just fun to watch this happen, and it's just, it's just fun to be there, they're great kids and future engineers, so.
The community supports that program quite a bit.
Oh, it's a big deal, and these kids are so, you know, have such ingenuity, and, you know, and a couple of kids that I've followed over the years, one is at NASA now, and, you know, it's just, it's really nice to see that, so it's exciting to see the next crop of robotics engineers next week, so I'll leave it at that.
If you ever want to go to a scene, go to the First Robotics Competition at Hofstra University, it's awesome, there's several hundred kids, they bring banners, cheering sections, and they cheer on their team, including West Hampton Beach.
It's a national program.
I know it is, a little shout out to Sag Harbor and where I work, Cinema Riches, it really is.
It's cool.
It's a high energy event, and you can go in and just check it out. This week, I went on the South Fork Commuter Connection to count folks and on, on the train, and I'm proud to say that on a cold day with traffic flowing, we had 90 people on the commuter connection that, that traveled over the Shinnecott Canal, so that's our base of people, so we're looking to build that up, and that's my lead in to say that we are having a change in schedule, that's what I was doing there, was handing out schedule change, and the Long Island Railroad has announced that on February 27th, there's gonna be a slight change in schedule, that means the first trains are gonna be leaving 16 minutes earlier, the afternoon, the first afternoon train is two minutes, leaving two minutes later, and we are adding a stop on the later train, and that new stop is at Spiong, so those are some changes in the train schedules, and.
And, and.
Well.
West Hampton and Spiong, or did, was it already going to West Hampton?
I thought it was just Spiong.
It ended at Hampton Bay, maybe it ended at West Hampton.
I think that's the morning one coming back after the second train, but it goes all the way to Spiong, so West Hampton, they are going to stop there, too, you don't have to jump off. And so, and the bus trips, the loop trips are going to correspond with these schedules, so that's good to know, we have a lot of teachers, town employees for East Hampton Town and our town as well using the train, so that's good news. Also, in Sag Harbor, if we have an, we are doing a project at Round Pond, shoreline restoration and stormwater runoff remediation, and we are gonna have a public hearing, an information session here at Town Hall and also in the Village of Sag Harbor, and of course, you're all welcome to be here, and it's also, we're gonna have a representative from the town trustees, as well as the Village of Sag Harbor, because this is a multi-jurisdictional project, it actually began in 2018, and it is coming to fruition. The public hearing in Sag Harbor is going to be on February 22nd, the public hearing here is next week on the 15th, these are Wednesday nights at 6:30.
Anything else?
That's all for now.
Okay, so, let's go back. So we, it's if for our work session, but we do have some executive session items, which we can begin, I think, right at 1 o'clock, that'll give you a few minutes to try to get something to eat, but we have personnel, litigation, acquisitions. So I'll make a motion to end our work session, we're going to executive session on those I.
Sure.
Second, if I counsel, if you're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.